Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Vanuell Little is with Greater First Deliverance Temple. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
We bow our heads as we pray. God of all creation, we come before you today, giving you honor and praise. This is a day that you have made. We rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask that your hand of blessing be upon this meeting. We ask that your wisdom and guidance be here as also. We thank you, Lord, for, in advance, for having let us have productivity and respect for others. And, Lord, we thank you, in advance, for blessing the families of those that are here and those that are to come. And we ask these wonderful blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope the people of Oklahoma City have noticed just what a higher priority the citizens have placed on health over the last few years. We have worked in partnership with the Oklahoma City County Health Department in so many different projects, and they have a new proposal that I think is really going to, again, just take one more step up. So I'm going to ask Jackie Shawnee and Shannon Welch if they'll come forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and then I'll let you tell them what we've got coming up.
As the city of Oklahoma City has prioritized the health and well-being of all its residents, and whereas active transportation promotes healthier residents with closer ties to their community, the more residents who choose active transportation, the greater impact we can have on halting the rise of obesity rates. Whereas Open Streets OKC reclaims part of a busy street for a few hours for non-motorized activity, everyone attending is invited to walk, bike, skate, or board while they meet local business owners and celebrate the unique charm of an historic Oklahoma City neighborhood. Whereas Oklahoma City County Health Department and its partners are hosting Open Streets OKC from noon to 4:00 p.m. on March 22nd in Uptown Northwest 23rd Street. And whereas events of this scope create lasting tight-knit neighborhoods across our city. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, proclaims March 22nd, 2015, as Open Streets OKC Day.
Let's show our appreciation for these two workers in the field. Tell us about Open Streets Day.
Well, Open Streets, we're so excited to be able to put this event on again, and we hope to continue to have these events every six months in our city. And we would love to invite you all to come out and participate with us. There'll be lots of activities for families and kids and children, and you can come out on Sunday, March 22nd, from noon to 4:00, and participate in active transportation. Bring your bikes and have fun with us.
Where's your day plan?
Sure, it's on Northwest 23rd Street between Western and Robinson.
All right. Well, we will be down there. I know that the council is all invited, and hopefully we'll get a big crowd again. It was a big success last year, and this proclamation is an official document, but we really appreciate the fact that you guys are out there helping coordinate these things. I think the citizens are well aware of the issues that we face and are intent on doing better, but opportunities like this really give them a chance to express it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's show our appreciation one more time.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. As we call the meeting to order, we're on Item 4 of the council agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. A is to receive the journal from March 10th, and B is to approve the journal from March 3rd.
With the items second.
All right. Any individual comments here on the journals? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 5 is requests for revocable permits. Doesn't look like we have anything listed today, so we'll move on to Item 6, which is requested for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple. On page 5, page 5 under 7H1, PV 091, and 7H2, PV 092, the applicant has requested that these items be deferred until the April 7th meeting. So again, that's Item 7H1 and 7H2 to April 7th. And then moving to page 9, under Item 9E1, Item B, 2600 North MacArthur, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has now secured. And then on page 10, under 9F1, the same address, 2600 North MacArthur, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Let's resess the council meeting. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items on the MFA.
With the items second.
All right, comments or questions here? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items.
With the items second.
Comments on this item?
I just want to point out on both the MFA and the PPA and actually the EAT, we do have a debt management policy on all three of those bodies that parallels the policy that was adopted for council a couple of weeks ago.
All right. Ready to vote the PPA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are three items.
With the items second.
All right, comments or questions here? Cast your votes on the EAT. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT. Re-convene the council meeting with a consent docket.
With the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations? All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence today, so we're on to Item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. Our first item, Item 9A, I understand, has been deferred until April 7th. Do we need to move that to April 7th, or has that already been deferred?
It's listed that way, so it's deferred.
Okay. So move on to Item 9B. Item 9B is an ordinance that would close an alley for the 499 project. Is there a motion here?
Yes, I'd make a motion to be approved. It was...
All right, comments or questions on 9B? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9C is an item that was introduced to council last week. This is a public hearing. It regards fee adjustments in the Parks Department. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on Item 9C today? All right, how about a motion then to move this one forward?
With the items second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion?
With the items second.
All right, cast your votes on 9D. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion on 9E?
With the items second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion?
With the items second.
All right, cast your votes on 9D. It passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion on 9E?
With the items second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9F? All right, how about a motion?
With the items second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is an opportunity to move into executive session to discuss our continuing water efforts, but nothing needed today. How about a motion to strike 9G?
Strike.
Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9H is claims recommended for denial. Is anyone here hoping to speak under the item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion then to deny the claim?
With the items second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10A? Claims recommended for approval?
With the items second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to Item 11. We first have an item that has come to us. Councilman White, do you want to speak to this item? It's a name change of a street that is over in the area of what used to be Crossroads Mall and is now Plaza Mayor.
Yes, they've requested, the present operators of Plaza Mayor have requested that we change the name to reflect the current business that operates there, and I'd move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 11A, and it passed unanimously. James, do you have anything else for us on items from council? Larry? Pete?
Just a comment on your comment as part of your speech to the National Mayors Association of... Your comment about our relationship with the federal government, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that. That is exactly what I think we need to do in this era of budget deficits and concern about the finances at all levels of government. We ought to be looking for ways to look together, work together, rather than this constant effort to meddle in each other's business and complain about it. I just really appreciate it. I think that really hit home with what needs to happen over the next...
Yeah.
Forever.
Well, we will see. Yeah, there's... Just when you think there's a bright light at the end of the tunnel, it just seems like we're taking one step forward and two steps backwards, doesn't it?
I agree, but I just think that more people in leadership ought to be saying things like that. That's what I appreciate. It's... I think individually, we'd all say that's a good idea, but so few people in leadership are willing to step out and say that, and I just think that's... I appreciate it personally.
I appreciate your comment. David? Meg?
I guess I just would like to recognize Stanton Young and what an incredible leader he was in our community and great efforts to build the health center complex and so many other things that... We'll maybe go a little quieter, but I just want to express my condolences to Barbara and his family.
Yeah, you know, we're losing that generation that did so many incredible things back in the 50s and 60s that we benefit from today with Jim Norick's passing a week ago and now Stanton Young.
It feels like we have to say this at every meeting.
Yeah.
It really is a big sea change, but he was a terrific guy.
And I believe his services are Thursday.
Thursday at Westminster Presbyterian Church.
Okay.
At 11:00 o'clock.
All right. John?
Mayor, let me add another comment about Stanton Young.
Sure.
Everything that was said is true. At a time when there was a potential of a lot of divisiveness in the city, Stanton Young is one of those people that stood up and spoke for unity, and he really is almost single-handedly responsible for the spark that what we now call the Innovation District. He had that dream a long time before we thought of the phrase "to do it with," and he'll truly be missed as a leader of Oklahoma City. He stands among giants that we talk about sometimes, about people that had the water vision a long time ago and things like that. Stanton Young is one of those people that stood among those giants that really, we now stand on their shoulders to go forward, and he's... He will be sorely missed.
All right, moving on to the city manager reports.
Yes, today we are doing our council briefings on city council priorities, and we have provided a safe and secure community priority briefing this morning. And Doug, are you going to lead us into that?
As you know, last fall, the council adopted the council priorities that we've got on our banner out here, and what our intention is, is each quarter during the year, we'll have a set of those to be presented, and so today we have Fire, Police, and IMSA here to talk about providing a safe and secure community. And I believe is it Chief City is going to start us off here for Police, then we'll have Chief Bryant for Fire and Steve Williamson from IMSA. So you're up.
It's fast. Good morning. We want to talk about city council priorities and what our initiatives are and our meeting for results measurements are that are in conjunction with that this morning. We'll start by just looking at some statistics over the last few years culminating up to 2014. As you can see here, between 2013 and '14, there was a 27% decrease in homicides, which was pretty significant. And since 2012, when we kind of got close to a record number, it's decreased even greater. That's where I... Yeah, between 2013. If you look at the homicides, you might say, you can look at the numbers and say nationally, that's not what was... That's not what we were talking about, at least locally, because the number of homicides is actually greater than 45 for '14. But the criteria for reporting those in UCR, those, the definitions are different. For instance, they don't include officer-involved shootings or justifiable-type homicides in their statistics. That's why it'll always be lower nationally than it is how we count them locally, because we still do count those, because we reported about 60, I think 62 in 2014, where the UCR reports 45. So that's the difference. If we look at rapes for 2014, over the last year, we had a 3.5% decrease. In 2000, the beginning of 2012 in January, between 2012 and '13, for those stats, the definition actually changed. You can see a tremendous increase between 2011 and I can't, you know, the 2011, 2012, the definition was the old definition, but we still had that increase. Then it continued to increase. We think we continue to see that high increase based on the change in the definition, the federal definition of what rape is and how we have to report it. Robberies, we had a decline last year in robberies, a 5.4% decrease in robberies between 2013 and '14. What's interesting to look at is really, we had 1,126 robberies in '14, which is lower than the ones, the numbers we had in 2002. So that's a definite positive. So I think we continue since 2011 to have that decrease in robberies. Aggravated assaults, which we obviously track and really based a lot of our initiatives on in trying to reduce aggravated assaults, which we've done over the last couple of years. The nice outcome to that is we've reduced a lot of other crimes, burglaries and property crimes, as a result of focusing on areas where we've had a lot of aggravated assaults. And you can see that we had a continued downturn from 2013 to '14 with a 3.5% decrease. So since 2012, when we peaked, we've had a significant downturn in those aggravated assaults. A lot of it has to do with a lot of the initiatives, the additional officers that you added, even though we couldn't hire them, we used a lot of overtime from the funding we had for those officers to address these high crime areas by putting overtime officers in there, and actually actually putting more officers in the field as a result of that. To provide a safe and secure community, for our target for 2000, calendar year 2015 is again going to be 5%. That's been our target over the last several years. The trend from 2012 to 2014, we have decreased our assaults overall 16%, which is significant. The next slide shows our violent crime clearance rates. You can see here where we have homicide, aggravated assaults, and rape. Our OCPD clearance rates for 2013, and our comparison's going to be between, for the national average for 2013, because those are the latest statistics. We don't get it, the FBI does not come out with their UCR statistics for '14 until usually set, won't be out till about September, October of '15, so we don't have those for comparison. So we are comparing our 2013. You can see the national average for homicide clearance rate was about 64%. Ours was 80%. Aggravated assaults, 57%, which is just about on track, just a little bit below the national average. Rape, our clearance rate was 48% compared to the national average of 40%, and robbery is 25% compared to the national average of 29. So out of all of those categories, robbery, we probably didn't do as well in all those categories compared to the national average in robbery. To date, for the first six months of calendar year 2014, I can show you, we're showing you what the clearance rates are up to this point, to kind of give you a comparison, but we can't compare to what the national average is because we don't have those statistics yet.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Do the statistics, are they nationwide? That's, are they based on the size of the city? Is it just total cases?
What we have up here are total cases, all cities. Now, I do break it down to cities over, you know, over 500,000, which we would fall into that category, but this average that you're looking at is overall.
Is there a remarkable difference between clearance rates and between the national average and the national average of cities they are sized?
There'll be some. The city our size, if you're looking and comparing those, will be a little bit lower. So, but we, you know, and we could provide that in the future. We could look at that and provide that in the future, because I'm pretty sure these are all, these are all national averages, right? Okay. Violent crime rates, let me see here. Okay, I'm sorry. They put it in my notes for me so I can answer that question. FBI shows Oklahoma City has a population of 605,000. So those cities that are over 500,000, if you look at homicide, for instance, the national average is, actually what you see up there is, is going to be, what they have there, the national average, is for cities over 500,000. So I'm wrong. This isn't overall. So the statistics are actually for cities over 500,000. That's what we've put up there. So that's what you're looking at. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, no, no, because we've got that in the notes. The national average is in the slide.
Right.
I think you're going to compare the numbers for cities.
Oh, over the size. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm wrong again. Good thing I've got staff here. That's why I have them here. Okay, the comparable is, for cities our size would be 57%, so it's lower. Again, they'll all be lower. Comparable for aggravated assaults would be 47% compared to 57%. Comparable for rape would be about the same. It's about 40.4%. And then robberies comparable is 24.6%. So they are lower for cities our size, so we look much better if we're comparing cities our size compared to other cities. So... Okay. The calendar year 2013 citizen survey showed 58% of citizens who reported they feel safe citywide. 2014, we dropped to 51%, and our target has been set at 55% ever since we've started the leading for results process. That was kind of our benchmark, and we have not changed that, so we have something to gauge whether or not we're doing better or worse than we did when LFR started, I believe, 2006, I believe it was. Pursuing citizens who report they feel safe, you can see the comparisons, and in calendar year 14, we show our actual was 51% and the target is 55%. You can see where we've been as high as 60% in 2009. It's fluctuated up and down ever since. Lowest was in '08 at 47%. Police response time to life-threatening calls, you can see where our physical average was 72% for 2014. Now, these are calls that we've responded to within nine minutes and 30 seconds. We've responded to those calls 72% of the time within that timeframe, either before or at nine minutes and 30 seconds. Our target is set at 90. There'll be some discussion next year about adjusting that sum, because we, after these years and years of looking at this, we feel like that's probably going to be a little bit high, and we developed that in talking with our consultants. We did our staffing study, but we think we may want to adjust that somewhat. If you look at, really, our dispatching, they're meeting, they're actually answering their calls within their timeframe, which is about two minutes, about 84% of the time. So they're doing, they're doing pretty well. Next slide. A response time for life-threatening calls. And here is a breakdown, a comparison over the years. Again, for 14, it was 72%. Physical year to date, this would be about the first six months of the, oh, since January, physical year to date, since January, it'd be at 72%. Our highest year was 75%. It's a year that we had changed some boundaries, and we saw a little bit of improvement in our response times, and our lowest, obviously, has been 70%. Any questions?
Yeah, it's obvious, or it's obvious to me at least, that officers in the field are doing the impact, those response times. I don't think there's any doubt about that. I just wonder at what point, as we continue to add more police officers, again, this year, we're proposing to add more, at what point we should expect to see some appreciable increase in that response time? I mean, would it take, would 40 more make a difference, or would 80 more make a difference, or does it take 200 more to make a difference?
That's a good question. I can't really, I can't really answer that until we actually add those officers. I mean, theoretically, the response times will have to improve. I mean, theoretically, they will have to improve. Just how much they will improve, even the consultants when we did it can't tell us exactly the exact number, because there's really nothing, there's really nothing to compare that to, and every city's different. Size of cities are different. Priority of calls and types of calls are different. So, you know, it's, until we actually do it, it's, you know, it's going to be very hard to say. That's why that 90% in looking at it, in adding officers, and really, we have added, even though we haven't gotten those full-time officers to the academy. This academy is the first academy we've had, we have some of those positions that you added back in 2012 in this academy. So we're going to get there, and we're doing some things to try to get, maybe have some larger classes and maybe have some overlap, if we can do that. We don't like to do that, but, you know, there is a need there for us to be able to try to get more officers out so that we can see. I think one thing that'll be interesting, we start the Saturday to Saturday, we'll start in April. That's when we will start our first Saturday to Saturday, and we're going to have it at our new Southwest Division. And we will be able to look at those officers and track those officers during that timeframe and see what type of impact they have, especially on a lot of those calls for service. So we're hoping to get some indication as to how that will affect it within a small, within a small group that we can actually look at and examine.
One of the things I think we continue to... Yeah, one of the things I think we continue to concern ourselves with is the, is not really so much the quality of our policing services, our fire services, or emergency services, but the public perception of that, and I don't think perhaps we talk enough about the unique situation Oklahoma City's in with regard to that perception. If you live where I do, and don't expect that it will take a little bit longer for a police officer to get there, or ambulance to get there, or a fire truck, if there maybe a need to move to town, because we have so, we're so spread out, we have so much of our population lives in, you know, not many live in any particular area, but lots of them live in all the outlying areas, and I don't know that we, that our, when we take those perception polls, that that's reflected very well, I, next time we do that, I'd like to see the perception for people that live, say, we could draw a line outside of which their perception would be gauged as opposed to the perception of somebody that lives in, in one of these newer facilities downtown.
We can do that, we can look back on previous.
Well, it just, I wonder about it, because I know that I catch a lot of, how long does it take the fire truck to get here, how long does it take, and I'm thinking, do you ever realize how long it takes you to get home, you know, do you know how long it takes to find a grocery store, you know, but those perceptions of people that live in the, they've chosen to live in those situations are part of this perception about how we feel about public safety and response times. I'd just like to see it broken out a little bit, so we'd have some ability to judge whether or not we think those concerns are totally reasonable or not, because sometimes I don't think they are, frankly.
And Chief, that's sort of a follow-on question, but do you also break out when we get the largest number of those Priority One calls, I mean, I would assume they're clustered around a Friday, Saturday timeframe?
Yeah, we've looked at those, and that was one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons we talked about having more overlap on that Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, because that's when we're going to get the higher priority calls, and the higher priority calls are going to be in the evening hours, you know, from say four to two o'clock in the morning is when they, when they pick up. Calls actually really pick up in the afternoon, around four o'clock, a lot has to do with accidents, people going home, and we have a lot of accidents, a lot of people get home and they see their house has been broken into, so our calls for service go up, but those Priority One calls then is the evening, as we get into the evening hours, and the weekends, and alcohol plays a large role in that, those type of Priority One calls increase during that period of time, so that's why we're basically trying to get those overlap days, starting with Saturday, and then we'll migrate to Friday.
I mean, that's why I'm so appreciative of that, because if, if the bulk of the calls are coming in over that timeframe, and yet we have fewer officers, that's clearly going to impact your response time, and so paying attention to, you know, when we need service is really critical.
Right, the new Saturday to Saturday overlap will be from 2:00 PM to midnight, and the idea is to take those new Saturday to Saturday officers and try to put them in areas where we're giving the most Priority One calls, serious offenses, to try to impact that, so it'll be interesting to see, see how we do that after a period of time.
Chief, I don't know the percentage, but I would suspect there is some percentage of these crimes being conducted by what I would consider younger people, say beginning at age 15 all the way up through 18, and often it's, it's those who have gotten involved with drugs and alcohol tend to get into other types of trouble. It seems to me if, if the city, and I know we have a truancy division, but if the city could work with the school districts and maybe some outside organizations to identify those youth, and early on, when they do begin to experience, you know, problems with drugs and alcohol, get them into a system that would help minimize that effect, even if it's some type of on-campus facilities where they're restricted to that area, it just seems like, I have known of young people who really come from good families, but end up getting involved with drugs and alcohol, and it just leads to other types of criminal behavior, if we could do something in a joint effort to address that a little bit, I'm not saying the police department by itself, I'm just saying the community as a whole would go a long ways, I think, to help lower the overall level of crime in Oklahoma City, but it would certainly require a joint effort from the schools, with the city, and other organizations, some not-for-profit, some faith-based, to try to make a collaborative effort to address that problem. Do you have any ideas to how many or what percentage of these crimes are committed, say, by younger people under the age of 20 or 21?
Well, it kind of depends on what crimes you're looking at, and of course, we've been focused on aggravated assaults, since the numbers have been so high over the years, the majority of your aggravated assaults, and if you're talking about a homicide, which is just an aggravated, is an assault with the worst outcome, you're really looking at 18, 19 to 24. You know, you don't, I mean, you do have juveniles involved in some violent crime, but if you're talking about some of the more serious violent crimes, the highest category is between that age group, 18 to 24, 25, maybe 26, so, they are, they are older, a lot of our shootings and stuff are with, with, with really people in their young twenties, mid twenties, versus, versus a lot of the juveniles, but we're taking, we're taking a lot of firearms off of younger and younger kids all the time, and some, and I looked at those statistics to go up, and I, and I feel like they have been over the, over nationally over the years.
But if we dropped it down to say burglaries and robberies, the percentage of those types of crimes?
Larcenies, those types of things, and I, and I agree with you, I think that in addressing some of those things you may consider minor at a young age, a lot, I mean, most of those kids that ended up doing serious crimes when they're 18, 19, to up to 24, have committed crimes when they were 14, 15, and 16, that weren't really adequately addressed at that point in time, so I completely agree with what you're saying as far as addressing those juveniles.
And I'm going to say something that sounds, that may sound pretty naive, I think there's very mean people, evil people, and they're going to commit crimes regardless of what you try to do, but then there are people who may not fall into that category, but again, they get introduced to drugs and alcohol, and one thing leads to another, and that's the group I would like to see if there was some way that we could address that type of problem, to intervene at a, as early of an age as possible, to get them off of that road to more serious types of problems, so, anyway, just my comments, thank you.
Any other comments?
All right, Chief, thank you.
Morning Mayor and Council, good to be here this morning, I'll be reporting on our strategic results of all fire responses within seven minutes, 70 percent of the time, and just to give you a little bit of background on that, that measure, that result is measured from phone pickup to on-scene, and phone pickup means the 911 operator, so that's the, we started measuring that entire time instead of breaking it down by individual components as we did in the past, so phone pickup is the actual time it was picked up for police or 911-initiated calls. In rare instances when somebody maybe would call the fire department dispatch seven-digit number or EMSA directly, and basically circumvent the 911 operator, there's like 12 to 18 seconds that are lost during that transfer process from police, so again, when we don't have those, we don't see that 12 to 18 seconds on that total response time. To break it down, again, and measuring all responses in seven minutes, 70 percent of the time, we want to make sure that you're aware that our computer-aided dispatch interface with EMSA began in July of 2012, so for fiscal year 2013, 61 percent, or for about 67,000 incidents, that was our percentage. 2000, fiscal year 2014, our actuals were 58 percent over, for 62 or 63,000 incidents, and currently for the fiscal year that we're in right now, we're at 57.7 percent, or for a total of 32,000 incidents. So the key measures, in operational services and dispatch, again, that the fire response is within five minutes, 70 percent of the time, EMS response is also within five minutes, 70 percent of the time, that we want to have those incidents dispatched within one minute, 90 percent of the time, and then obviously for EMSA or PD-generated incidents, that we have those dispatched within two minutes, again, we have that transfer process and/or EMSA's medical priority dispatch system that kicks in on those emergency medical incidents that add a little bit of time to that. So this is the breakdown of the actual dispatch time, so from phone pickup to when our units are actually dispatched at the fire station, and you can see there for fire, you know, we're just over the 70 percent range there, and for EMSA or PD-generated incidents, around the 60 percent range currently. And so responses within five minutes from dispatch to being on-scene, as you can see there for fire-related, and again, that is a fire call where there's multiple units being dispatched, we're just over the 50 percent range, and for emergency medical incidents, up towards 60 percent currently. Total incidents dispatched per month, you can see the numbers there, again, that sharp decline, if you recall, in July of 2012 was when we were directed by council to only respond to higher priority medical incidents, so that resulted in that decline, but as you can see since that time, and now currently, we're actually kind of creeping back up, so we are on the increase again as far as total incidents that we're responding to per month. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Chief, is that increase because you're responding to different calls, or is that just an increase in the number of severe incidents that you're responding to?
Prior to July of 2012, we were seeing an annual increase anyway, so again, we basically dropped back down, but now we're actually inching back up towards, so again, it was kind of where we were anyway as far as the increase, we're just, you know, we dropped it down about 20 percent of our total call volume, but it's just the, just the increase in demand on the service, yes ma'am?
What do you attribute that increase now, to just more, more people?
Could be more people, obviously, people generate your incidents, so again, there's probably a lot of things that factor into it, public health, again, maybe more traffic, you know, in terms of vehicle accidents, our fire calls aren't necessarily going up a great, you know, they're staying fairly static, so, as far as the number, so it's, again, it's probably just people and greater demand on the service, some people obviously, you know, their, their access to healthcare is to call 911, so we're seeing more and more of that.
Is the, I, the, most of the comments I made to Chief City had to do with people's perceptions of police protection, do you have statistics on protection of people's perception of fire protection that's similar to the ones that he had?
Well, in terms of satisfaction, I mean, the citizen survey, we come up pretty high, what, about 90 percent or so, Doug, in the latest surveys, I don't, I mean, as far as perception, I don't know if you all, you can maybe answer that better than I could, but I certainly don't get a lot of complaints down at my office about, you know, people having an issue with our response times, or, you know, the number of vehicles or whatever that we respond to a certain incident, so, but I think your point was good as far as, again, we're not meeting our 70 percent target for fire responses within a total of seven minutes, we're doing a lot of things internally to address that, you know, we're looking at each individual fire companies, what we refer to as out-of-the-shoot time, so from the time they're dispatched to the time they're actually en route, and we're looking at those, we're looking at our actual individual dispatchers' time that they take to process a call, so if we can make any improvements or provide any training to individuals that would improve that, we can do that. I think though, one thing we might need to start looking at, and obviously, you know, we're building new stations in some of the outlying areas to help improve those response times, the one southeast will be done about a year from now, or a year from the summer, so we'll see if that has an impact. I'm not ready to give up on that target yet and adjust it down or anything, but I think something we may need to look at in the future is responses within five miles from a fire station and maybe outside of.
I think I'd like to see the numbers in the same, the same way for police.
We have, we have for both police fires, we can break that down.
Because, you know, I get a lot of it, and I'm sure the people that represent areas that are, that are remote get some of it too, but if we had statistics to show that those response times are dictated as much by the choice of where you live as they are whether we have a quality of system or not, I would, I would much prefer to have that answer at my fingertips if that, when I'm asked that question, because you get them about water, you get them about fire, you get them about police, you get them about EMSA, and I'd like to have a reasonable answer, you know, they, everybody talks about, well, I pay taxes too, well, you know, the amount of taxes, sales taxes per square mile in 164th and Henni are a lot different than they are at 29th and May, and so the city can't afford to provide more services there, it's the individual's option that chooses to live in the remote areas, and it, not to do the finger-wagon part, but at least to have an answer, because there is a logical answer for that, for the, and that affects our overall response times, if we show overall response times, and you count somebody that lives in Little Axe as part of your, your response time, and compare that to somebody that lives downtown, I mean, it's a skewed number, so, I'd just like to see it, so, so it'd become a talking point for several of us, I think, when we address areas that are outside of the urban, heavily urbanized areas.
So with that, all the internal things that we're trying to do, and again, let's, hopefully these new stations will have an impact, but again, we're going to look at that very thing as far as, you know, ISO for insurance purposes, rate your insurance on, you know, how close you are to a fire station, so we'll probably use that same criteria in looking at response times.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think it'd be relevant, just to have, just to be a fact I'd like to have at my fingertips when I, when I address people that bring those questions up, and they're valid questions, but the answer's also valid, and if I had it at my fingertips, it'd be easier to talk about it, and I'm sure James has the same thing, and I know John does, Larry does, so.
All right, Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir. And Steve Williamson?
Mayor and Council, good morning, before I get started, I would first like to introduce our, since we have you all here, our new chief operating officer who resides in Oklahoma City, Jim Winnow, if you'd stand up, he's been in the system a long time and be very valuable to all of us. As you note there, we are December 14 without exclusions, we're at 88 percent, our goal, of course, is 90 with exclusion, so we were very happy with the upturn of over 4 percent in our responses. If you recall, we raised our response rates this last year from 845 to 49 to 10, and we're very happy to say with that, that has been very beneficial, we've increased our non-emergency priority to non-life-threatening from 1259 to 2459, with that, that really increased the response time by two and a half minutes in actuality, that was more of a contractual issue, and happy to say also next month, Oklahoma City's system, along with the Tulsa and Edmond system, is featured in the National Journal of Emergency Medical Service magazine on the cover, leads to worry about its activities in cardiac arrest, so we're very excited about the future. I'd like to say that we extremely value the fire department as our first responders and the system approach of EMS, I think one thing that the Chief didn't mention, that one increase was due, some of it was due due to a challenge we had in December and January with employee shortage. It's a national issue. We have remedied that in February. We've increased the number of paramedics we had, and we had called them to respond to some calls that we felt like needed to be dispatched and have them first respond on, but the, that issue is solved, and we're very excited about the future. And I'd like to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
I'd like to see the peripheral areas separated, at least for the purpose of the statistics, so, because it gets the same kind of concerns about Emsa responses that I do fire and police, so. I'd just like to see it broken out. I don't want to change it, I just want the information so I can talk to people when they're asking.
The cardiac survival rate here at thirty-eight, thirty-point-eight, the national average for communities is nine, so we're very excited about this team approach we're taking, whether it's citizen CPR, or the way we orchestrate cardiac arrests with the first responders. It's a science, and we're very excited about the art we've created with it.
Steve, you talked about Level Zero for a little bit. Level Zero, I mean, explain what Level Zero is, and then talk about your approach to that. Since you switched over, there were some transition issues with the new, with the new subcontractor, and then, as you mentioned, there were some problems getting them fully staffed for a while, and I know that there's been some financial penalties, I guess, to the subcontractor in regard to that, so. And I think you're addressing it, but talk about that just a minute.
Sure. First, we start off with, we have a performance-based contract here with our subcontractor, AMR, Medical Medical Response, and what that means, it is an amount of how many units you have available to the public, is that you meet a percentage of response time requirements. So whatever the society throws at you, you have to be prepared to respond at the ninetieth percentile. Now, we use ninety percentile instead of an average. You all think of a bell curve, fifty percent on average would be below or above. With a ninety percent fractile response time, which is in our contract, that means the curve is very short on those that don't get it, only ten percent. They came in, there's been a lot of talk ad hoc that when they bid it, they bid it at fifty million dollars, over five years less than the company that had it before, and this is the consequence. I would submit to you that with the five million dollar performance bond up, and what they have done, how their stock went up when they received this contract, and what the stock would do if they lost this contract, it's not a financial issue. They have been working very hard, excuse me, very hard with, it's, first of all, a national problem with paramedics right now with the new curriculum. They could go a little bit longer and become a nurse, so that has stopped some of the flow. The only part of the United States right now that sees a lot, excess of those of paramedics right now is the East Coast. They have instituted a signing bonus and shift differentials and other things to augment their recruitment, and it's doing quite well. On the Level Zero, because we're a system and that's not adversarial between the two parties, when we get our ambulances, and I welcome for all of you to ride because you'll see this happen, there are peaks and times where all the ambulances are on a call. That doesn't mean that we have no ambulances. At that same period of time, we might have twelve of the twenty-four, twelve of the thirty at the hospital, and they've been at the hospital more than ten to fifteen minutes. That means that when we say Level Zero, that tells the medics to clear out of the hospitals ready for calls. Majority of our, a lot of our calls are dispatched from the hospital as they get done and get done. We don't have a lot of excess capacity, but we do want to take care of the patients, and the patients aren't being harmed. Now, if the patient is not receiving at the response time requirement that they're supposed to get, the ten fifty-nine or the twenty-four fifty-nine, AMR is fined. And if they don't reach ninety percent for the month, because that's what the city bought, ninety percent of the time these people get these excellent response times, then they're fined. And they're fined, it's prorated at eighty-nine percent, it's twenty percent, twenty thousand, and then it goes up. Now, the reason for that, because in this contract, we like to have a lot of checks and balances, we want to make the fine far greater than what it costs if they were fully staffed. So there's no incentive for them to be understaffed, because it costs them greatly when they, when they don't make that ninety percent threshold. So we instituted that for two months. Now, they surprised us coming in. We drastically reduced the number of exclusions. So when they took over, I didn't give them any leeway in time to learn this system, because we gave them enough data to know the system when they bid. But they had been compliance, well, well in compliance all the previous months, the twelve months before that. But several things happened. We have some standalone emergency centers that have opened here, and because of the nursing shortage, they hired a lot of paramedics, and at the same time, two other companies came in and promised less working hours, higher salary, and so we lost some of that. Since then, they have come, many of those have come back to us. You know, it's, grass isn't always greener, and these are, this was found out. So when we say Level Zero, because we have the good working relationship with the first response, we're not going to abuse it. They go out on calls that might not require under, that don't require under our standard procedure for them to first respond to. Now, there's been some talk about, I know you might have heard, that, well, they've been on divert average, or Level Zero average of two hundred and, two hours and a half when they do that, and that's not true. For example, there was different times in February where we said Level Zero and got the people clearing the ERs and that sort of thing. We didn't know at what point, because we were being rushed, we had, we had an unusual busy period, because we track all this, as you mentioned, Counsel, we know time of day and day a week, and then we also have past history to see what the peaks are, so we know how to staff to meet these response times. But we left among that Level Zero till, because of this unusual circumstance that we had. But we know that the important thing is the care to the patient. We know managing the contract, what was purchased, and what medical standards have to be maintained, and I'm proud to say, since I've been here, we have maintained that.
Any other comments or questions for Steve? Thanks very much for coming down.
One last thing, Mayor, I just want, Counsel Greenwell brought up this issue about the social aspect. We're looking at, we have many, not many, but more than I want, that we transport over a hundred times a year, and we're looking at going to the ERs that are already busy, and we're trying to, we're looking at caseworker, to try to find other means for these people to get the care they need without being taken to the emergency room. We're actually trying to reduce our calls, because most of these are socially related. And so it's a huge issue, it's costing us all billions of dollars, and we're in the process of, really in the process of this year, of getting into that case management to try to remedy some of that. All right, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other item on the agenda, under City Manager Reports, is an update on local business subcontracting, and over the last six years, the local subcontracting, or the local contracting has been ninety-four percent on geo-bomb projects and eighty-six percent on MAPS-for-kids projects. So I just wanted to report back on that.
That is of extreme interest to our local contractors. We hear about that a lot, and I, just a comment that I hear is, you know, what defines local? And, you know, does that mean a real office, or, you know, somebody in an office? I mean, I think there's kind of a range of what local might mean.
Well, local is defined by us, our contractors and subcontractors, with addresses in Oklahoma, Canadian, Cleveland, Kingfisher, Logan, McLean, and Potawatomi counties. That's how we define it by our.
Right, with an address.
Yeah. So they could, I think you're saying they could have an address there, but the number of their resources aren't there. I don't think that could happen, but I don't think that happens a lot. We've got a lot of substantial contractors here.
We have great local contractors.
Who do, you know, the lion's share of our work.
I just raised that as something that's been brought to my attention, that sometimes it is nothing more than an address.
And that could be, but I don't think that's often.
Often, good. Thank you.
What were those percentages again?
It was ninety-four percent for general obligation bomb projects, and ninety-four percent and eighty-six percent for MAPS-for-kids projects.
MAPS-for-kids? That's high, I would think. It's a good percentage. Anything else from Council today? Ready to adjourn?
Citizens to be.
Oh, citizens to be heard. Apologize. John Height?
Hi, I'm John Height, thirty-two, thirty-seven, Northwest Forty-first Street, Oklahoma City, and I've got a concern about the convention center site that we had selected. One thing that I do suggest is if Bob Howard and his attorney-partner developed that, that we limit the development to one story, and whether it's commercial or residential, and that, secondly, we, as soon as possible, I know that before the convention center was decided on where it is, where it was going to be, that we were going to make Harvey a bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly boulevard, and what I'd like to see is that be made immediately, or as soon as possible, a bike and passenger pathway, so that we don't have cars going up and down that road. And then, thirdly, I think we should shame the, both Bob Howard and his attorney-partner for using our development money that we have spent on the new park and Mary Gardens, and just let them know that what they're doing is very un-citizenship-like. And those are three issues concerning the convention center park, and perhaps, if we did that, they might come down to a reasonably-priced situation where we could afford it, or if not, at least it'd be a one-story situation where it's kind of a seamless area between the park, or between our two major parks downtown, the New City Park and the Mary Gardens Park. Second, one other, two other things, if I can remember them both. One is that a long time ago, before the crosstown was relocated, Mayor Cornet announced that he did not want outdoor signs on that, and of course, as soon as he announced that, five outdoors, I walked that area, you know, all the time, and I noticed five signs going up within about two weeks after he announced that, so they were grandfathered it to the, to the area. And what we might do, if you, Councilmen decide that that's a good idea, is that three years from now, or five years from now, we give notice, not, but we give notice now, that there'll be a fine for outdoor signage at, you know, after three years or five years, or maybe a thousand dollars a day, or something really ridiculous, and then we could buy back those signs for maybe what they built them for, whatever, and then we wouldn't have any signs on the crosstown. And I can't, oh, the other one was, in this morning's newspaper, Edmond decided that between Oklahoma City and Edmond, they might start charging as much as six dollars for a round-trip ticket, and we need to have the bus department, or our bus transit service, figure out how we can get our, our Oklahoma City citizens to Central State and back, or to UCL and back with a purchase of a weekly or monthly pass, and, you know, without incurring additional charges, like we do the Norman bus, buses, if they have a thirty-day pass, you can, you know, students can go all the way, you know, all the way to Norman and back with no additional charge. And so we should do the same thing for the bus system in Edmond, especially if they're going to charge six dollars a day, or, you know, for a round-trip ticket. So those are, those are my ideas. Can I ask the mayor and the city manager what they think of those ideas?
Well, typically, we don't necessarily respond live during the meeting.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to get an idea, to shoot down any of these ideas that I had, or.
Yeah, well, you know, and you're also welcome to attend some of the MAPS III subcommittee meetings. Those are open meetings.
I know.
If you have specific interest in.
I know. I have been to some of them, especially the transit.
I will comment, though, on the outdoor signage. State law dictates a lot of what municipalities can do, and a lot of times, we're caught up in that legality.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to throw it out just to see what was possible, because I don't like them any more than you do.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it.
Anyway, those are some ideas.
We need more voices like yours, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh-huh. Serge Nelson?
Good morning, Counsel. I want to thank the city manager, and Mrs. Kersey, and y'all for letting me be here today. And I'll explain, I've been on both sides of the fence, as I've told you in the past. Being in the military is one thing. It's one battlefield. It comes and goes. Of course, not like it is today, but our police officers face it every day. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read this just the way I wrote it. "For the first reason I'm here, like I said, is the police department. The last twenty years alone, America, of which Oklahoma is a part of, has changed more than anyone wants to admit. In my teens and even my twenties and early thirties, troubles were more mild nature compared to today. We didn't have nearly half the stabbings or the women's getting beaten and raped in murders and robberies like what is in the fact going on today. DNA, of which I support, only in part, which I will now explain. We don't need to be carrying guns on the street. My God, western days like that are long gone, and it's supposed to be gone. We're supposed to be growing up now, and things are more streamlined. It sure is. If you don't like the road rage and disagree with the person serious enough, just get your gun and call it even. That's not what I call even. I call it a license for chaos. The lawmakers have gave practically everyone, including the schizos, the people to go to general what clearly in the backgrounds that are clear. And there's a lot of bad elements out there who just ain't got caught yet, and they can't buy guns. What it is they can do with them is a wide range of things, which I do not intend to explain. The police and licensed law enforcement officers are people. They should be the only ones carrying weapons like these. They have the badges, the good, bad, or indifferent. That's how you can tell the most part, the good from the bad. Besides, they are trained for these things, and for everyone, there are police officers. There's one hundred people out there, for every one police officer, and if only one goes bad, they correct it. They're extremely extensively trained, and they're in all kinds of situations, some best not even as be described, but with everyone carrying a gun, it becomes the hardest way to say, who's really at fault? What's worse, the statistics show that the high rate of guns used in nearly every crime, especially where killings take place. Many are not, and I repeat, are not officer-related killings. Police officers today, like our own right here in Oklahoma City, are very human, they're not cowards, but they do carry a sense of fear, just like everyone else, because it's their job to protect and do and to defend. But..." and defend. But we have, we do have to put the guns out there. It's an open-door shooting gallery, and most of the people who wind up facing the guns are already civilian-type people, not trained or skilled, or more afraid than the police officer. But once in that type of situation, they want a cop, and they want them bad. But time says, no way. But when a police officer, strange how things seem to change, you can bet your booty, it doesn't alter one, excuse the expression, damn thing. Except for the fact, now both people have weapons. Now the officer is trapped in the middle, and for the most part, it was a tragic thing to begin with. The officer didn't plan to start out the day after coffee and roll call, or snack, lunch, or whatever, to just go out, pick someone out for target practice. It's already a bad one for either the injured or deceased, or the officer. And either way around, then there's the families to consider. All those loose and oftentimes exaggerated stories by those who are around say what might have seen, or what did happen, or regardless of how it did in fact take place, the police feel more badly than most. That's what they do every day for a living. They serve and protect. They don't try, if you think about drawing their weapon and kill, or maim, that's not in their book anywhere. During their training, every single person is, in fact, trained to forget that gun is there at all cost. But know it's there at all cost. And that's the difference, that is very clear. There's that one time that everyone on both sides now have to live with. It's hard, very hard. It's bad, all the way around. It's strange, without peace, courage, and the dignity of self-control. These five words dumped together into one is called chaos. It doesn't take news buff in the world to see that every day, what's going on in the news, and plenty of it. We're here in the country with our fair share, but we don't need our streets turned into a shooting gallery. Our guns should be left at home, and if that was in fact practice, let's just say, let's the police make the decisions. Because when they do it, we call it protecting our own, or house, or whatever. And the real reason for us to be carrying a gun is hiding behind it. It creates a sense of uncertain pain, unexplainable pain. That's the gun you gave the edge to, and then you can get by with it. Wearing it all the time, out in the open or concealed, is a true license for trouble. Oftentimes, it's hard for the law to really separate the truth from the fiction. The law tries to do what's right, but oftentimes, it don't add up that way. But the law still has to go with what they see and often feel, and even think of how it appears to have happened. I've been on both sides of that fence, and things can get twisted easily. And where the facts say one thing, it could have also happened another way, too. I would not want to put my conscience to be my guide in that kind of a mess. Now, don't get me wrong, there's a bad apple every now and then, but they're weeded out quick, and the issues are caught and resolved. Once in every great while, it's not. But it's not to blame the whole police department over one. That's the greatest unjust of them all. In closing, I'd like to take time, look at the downtown area. I see these monuments to fallen officers, to grant to their memory the honor and sacrifice they paid for the service of this city as a whole. Oklahoma City is growing, and we need police and fire personnel to keep things together for us all. And oftentimes, our very lives depend on them. Let me leave you with this as well. Officers are, for the most part, are trained to make snap decisions when it's called for. It's very hard, and it's not foolproof. And often, decisions are final. There's two sides of this at every onset. Lumberwinds will be hurt and want to point fingers. They're hurting inside, too. Then there's the other side, that officer. He has to live with, did I do this right? Was my decision right? Did I have to use my gun? And most of all, telling himself or herself, I just shot one, someone. There's the fastest five reasons alone that the police officer is dealing with, having to live with all that hurt and pain of just what happened. Police are a very special group of people. That badge and all that comes with it is hard, very, very, very hard. Military, like I said before, do not have to use their weapons, except in hostile and combat situations. But that's the most part. When it's over, it's over. Police have to do theirs 24/7 every day. Driving around in a patrol car, doing nothing, to them, that's the way a day should go. But those days are very, very few. But when they do come, officers are damn glad to get it. That's when the job is more than a job. It's a successful day. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Joe. John, thank you, too. Word adjourned.